Tonight's meeting is being convened in compliance with Governor Cuomo's executive orders, which suspend certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow municipal boards to convene meetings via video conferencing without in-person attendance by the public. The public has been provided with the ability to view, hear, and participate in the meeting, and a transcript of the meeting will be provided at a later date. The link to the live stream of the meeting has been provided to the public, and a video of the meeting will be made available on public access television, as well as a link on the town's website. Further, all submission materials and agendas are available to be viewed on the town's website. There's a quorum present, so we'll call the meeting to order. And our first matter this evening is the continuation of the public hearing on Chapakawar Crossing, the East Village, MFPD. This is an application for a subdivision approval, site development plan approval, planning board application for wetlands permit, steep slopes permit, tree permit, and stormwater pollution prevention plan approval for 80 Bedford Road. So I think what we would do tonight, obviously, we don't have a resolution. We'll try to get that going for you in January. But given the scheduling and the COVID difficulties with staffing and vacations, it's really not going to be possible to get this done in December. So we'll look toward January to get this going. So I thought it would be still appropriate and good to make some progress this evening, get some updates on some issues that we talked about last time, and go from there. Hopefully, it'll make things a little bit quicker and faster in January. So Andy or Matt, do you want to bring us up to date? You have a couple of new pieces of information that you can share with us, bring us up to date, and then I'm going to ask Bob to bring us up to date with regard to the intersection of 117 and Roaring Brook Road and where we are on that issue.
On behalf of you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Andy.
So we had two open items from last meeting that we discussed with you and said we would engage in further study. We sent a note yesterday, I'll share my screen if I may. If I can share my screen.
Should be able to, sure.
It says host disabled, participants screen share. Thank you. So we submitted yesterday two sketches that we prepared. One, this is the trail area to the east of the East Village, just west of Cowden Lane. And for the discussions at last month's meeting, we were asked to extend the trail area to the mown lawn area that is joining the east side of the pond. We've prepared a graphic to add that mown lawn area. As you may recall, per agreement with Reader's Digest and now with Summit, the neighbors along Cowden Lane are allowed to mow this area on the east side of the pond to give them visual and physical access to that area. And we've shown two extensions from the proposed trail system, one here on the left and one here on the right, that will allow those residents, if they choose, to connect up to the trail system that extends within the meadow and then out towards the retail area and out towards the northern end of the site.
Terrific. Thanks, Andy. Andy, just refresh us, because we have some new members as well. How will the trails be maintained? Is that something that the association will maintain in perpetuity?
Yes, these are through the meadow, particularly the meadow trails will either be mown through the grass or dirt trails, and that will be part of the full site association's requirement to maintain that as far as the general maintenance of the roads and walkways.
Good. Okay, thank you.
The second item that we looked at was the connector driveway between the loop road just north of the CPAC drop-off area and the parking to the west. And as you may recall, we were challenged because of the short distance and the change in grade, which is about six, six and a half feet between the loop road and the parking lot, to achieve grades that met the requirements of the town's driveway regulations. But Mark Bratt of our office and working with Bob Cialli was able to drop down the loop road profile a bit and tweak the profile alignment of this drive such that per the profile up top, We're able to achieve at the steepest point a 10.5% grade, which is within the planning board's purview to allow. Typically, the driveway maximum grade under the code is 10%, but the code provides that the planning board, upon consideration, can go up to 12%. So Mr. Cialli just received this yesterday. We haven't had a chance to confer with him, but we believe that between us and he, us and him, we're able, we'll be able to refine this further if necessary to provide for a connection that works under the town code.
Terrific. Thank you. Great. Anyone, any questions on any of these latest pieces of information and updates from the applicant?
Yes. Can we go back to the trail visual?
Yeah.
So, thank you. I know this was a request, and you guys fulfilled it. I like that a lot. My question is, my understanding is that this mown grass area was accessed by local residents of Cowden Lane, but it is not exclusive to them. Is that true?
It is an informal agreement between the Cowden Lane residents and, as I mentioned, Reader's Digest, now Summit. Cowden Lane is a private drive, so theoretically, it's not open to the general public. Private road, right?
Right, and likely it was a non-issue before because it essentially led nowhere. But now we're connecting it to something, which is the East Village and CPAC and then the rest of the site. And I'm just curious if you guys have thought about that? Is that a concern from either side, either from the Chapakawar Crossing side or the Cowden Lane residents? We're not creating a connector between these two places, which is obviously good in theory. I'm just curious if that has people thought about that? And I wonder, so if Cowden is a private street, if there are any parking regulations, if someone's coming to CPAC, might they even park there and walk? Maybe that's far-fetched, but just thinking that maybe unintended consequences from an otherwise sort of good gesture.
Well, our prior proposal was planned in part just to address that issue. We did not make a connection to the mown areas, so there was no direct connection from the trails to Cowden Lane. But per the last meeting discussion, we showed that. Now, the planning board could take it either way. The applicant is comfortable either providing any connections or not having.
And has there been any discussion with the residents of Cowden Lane, whether they want this or not?
We have not had direct contact with them. Dave Walsh has spoken to them, not immediately recently, but over the past year regarding continuing the mowing of the grass. So we know that that is, has been agreed, again, informally to continue. But we have not made that contact.
From my perspective, you know, if this is for them, then it might make sense just to chat with them to see if they want it. Because if they don't want it, I could understand why they may not want it. But that's just my thoughts on this. I appreciate you guys drawing it and showing it and being willing to do it. Makes sense to an extent, but I would also, perhaps it's not desired by them. Maybe we're giving something to them that they don't want.
So Dave's not here this evening. He's got a family illness he's dealing with. Dave's in direct contact with Cowden most of the time. To be honest, I really don't know where Cowden is on this particular issue. So certainly, Dave can check back, and we can let you guys know. I think, to your point, I think it cuts two ways. The trails were always really designed as more of an interior device that people would wander the trails who were either residents with inside Chapakawar Crossing or had been inside Chapakawar Crossing. I don't think it was ever really contemplated as a connection point from Cowden Lane. But, well, we can double-check with Dave, and we'll let Bob or Sabrina know what the feedback is when we get it, when he comes back tomorrow or the next day.
Great. Thank you.
So the, I guess what we're talking about here is the potential for this to be an attractive nuisance, where people would then say, oh, wow, here's a park, and we can park our car here, and we can walk in the open space. And the pond is sort of, if it's a nice pond and well-maintained, is definitely would be an attraction. In terms of the mowing, though, unless I'm mistaken, Cowden Lane is a private road that is jointly owned by the residents of the Cowden Lane Development. Is that correct?
Yes.
So that area, which is to the east of it, which is to the east of your property line, the right-of-way line, they would be mowing that anyway at their own discretion because it's their property.
That's correct.
And the area that goes to the west of that and gets up to the banks of the pond and makes the connections to the trails, that would be something that would be mowed by them also, by your permission, or would be mowed by the Commodery Agreement of the Chapakawar Crossing?
No, it would be, as it has been mowed by them, with the Chapakawar Crossing owner's permission.
Okay. All right. Yeah, so it's an interesting question. I can see where they might, you know, go ahead and mow it, and if it gets to be a problem, you know, stop mowing it. But it's a fair question to ask. I agree.
Yeah, we'll check with Cowden. Cowden, I think, has always viewed the pond as kind of a visual amenity to Cowden Lane. And, you know, this predates my time here. And I think readers that always let them have access to the pond and, if you will, handle landscaping issues in and around there. I think it's been extremely informal. So I don't think that last step has been thought out. But in terms of who does the additional mowing, I think Andy's right. Those are the folks who are kind of taking care of it down there and probably will continue to do so unless, you know, some other edict arrives.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Bob?
Yes?
I've got a, if Andy, if you could go to the, excuse me, to the next drawing, the plan of the Chapakaw, Forming Arts Center, Chapack. Yeah, you want to zoom in the way you had it zoomed in before?
All right.
If you could, please.
Yeah, it went away. Let me get it back.
I'm just wondering, now that we have extended that, the walkway along the loop road on the side of the building as a drop-off sidewalk, past the second crosswalk, which I think is great, thank you. I think that's going to make a big difference. We left this, it looks like this green patch between the walkway that extends from the first crosswalk and then makes a right and then a left turn. And then there's this green patch of like curb space, curb area. And to me, it just doesn't seem logical that you'd have along that drop-off zone, you'd have all of a sudden this green area. Can we just pave that?
Where is that? So we were adding a concrete walkway here so people can drop off without standing in the crosswalk. And after leaving that, they would get back on the road and then cross over to go down there.
No, but you see, there's a hole, there's a, it's like a missing tooth in the walkway along the curb face.
On this side?
Crosswalks. I don't have, I don't have.
On the south side in front of the transformer.
Right here. Oh, here.
Yeah. You're the transformer, exactly. Thank you.
I think we, you know, it's, I think you would want to control where people stop. The idea would be that people stop past the crosswalks so there's not, you don't have people crossing with a car in between, rather than having people stopping on both sides.
Oh, I don't buy that because you've already got them stopping in between the two crosswalks. I mean, I'm sorry, I just don't buy that. It seems, just seems to me, it's just leftover thing that we didn't think to deal with. You know, we just forgot to say, well, let's put some concrete there now.
Well, we can certainly look at moving this piece of the sidewalk just back down to the road.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay, or just make it wider. I mean, I mean, it's just how much concrete are we talking about here? So, yeah, if you would, please, at least have a sidewalk continuous along that zone.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sabrina, do we have, there was one, there was talk at some point of having the Chapack that we're going to put a sign in front of the transformer. Is that still part of the plan? I don't know if that's really the applicant's plan, or is that the Chapack's plan?
I'm not really sure if that's still.
Well, Robert?
Yeah, I believe there's a stone retaining wall there in front of.
Yeah.
In front of the transformer. And I think there were some plappings that the plan did plan on putting there to screen that some way somehow.
Right. At one point, Lisa Katz was talking about having a sign there, and that would be the shows for the future, but.
Oh, like an electronic sign?
Yes.
Yeah, actually, Bob, it was one of the things that we enjoyed in the process because Chapack put up their own sign without a permit that was in excess of your signage regulations. So there, you know, I should, I think they should just continue with whatever it is they want to do, and you guys can sort it out with them.
Yep. Well, it just makes more sense, to Tom's point, to put the concrete down lower if we're going to have a sign there, I guess. You fill it in.
Is that the right area in the red?
I don't see, I don't see the reason that if there's a sign that goes there, that's fine. And I mean, apparently, that would need some more detailed, you know, design work. It does take long to figure it out, so we just need to sit down and do it.
Yep.
But I don't, I don't see a need to necessarily remove the sidewalk, move the sidewalk, because that's where you're got, you have the area, most people moving, I mean pedestrians. It seems to me, just fill in, fill in the concrete.
Yep, okay.
And as I recall, in those earlier discussions we had, geez, a year and a half ago or whatever it was, that the sign that they wanted to do, you see the retaining wall, which is indicated here, I think? Maybe I'm wrong, Andy, but it's indicated as like this hockey stick that goes to the left.
Yes.
I remember they wanted to put the, yes, the retaining wall on the, I'm not a hockey player, so I don't know what the part of the stick is, the blade. They wanted to put it on that angled piece so people would see it as it came up the road. And the discussion of what to do about the transformer and whether it's unsightly was, I think, was, I think, another discussion. But again, I think it's just getting together with them. And I'm sure Felix is right, that they're going to figure out what to do, and then they're going to do it. And I imagine that, you know, we'll all be involved in that when the time comes, or we may not be, but I don't think it's necessarily something that we need to worry about here.
Yep. Agreed. Okay. Anyone else, anything on these two new aspects? If not, Bob, would you bring us up to speed on Roaring Brook Road and the intersection of 117 and our concerns about the proximity of the sidewalk at the curve and the need for bollards and what the jurisdiction is?
Absolutely, Robert. Good evening, everyone. Matthew, could you do me a favor and bring up that intersection point for the area we're speaking of? I think you just had it up before. That would be helpful in my discussion.
I got it.
Okay, first, I think there was a issue last time about where the right-of-way was, and they did a nice job here. This is the right-of-way based on the taking. I'm drawing it in red right now. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
That's the new right-of-way based on the taking. Because the old right-of-way used to come down here, but they had to take all this for the sidewalk improvement. So I know that was brought up by you, I believe, last time, Tom, about, you know, where this is relative to the Roingbrook right-of-way.
Yes.
Starting from here, going this way, would be the right-of-way of Roingbrook. And then all of this down here would be within the state, if that answers your question. But anyway, that's a side topic, but they were kind enough to show it now, so we do know where the right-of-way is. It's all in purple, a agenda. I met with Ann Dorelli, she is the perimeter engineer with the New York State DOT on a few occasions. And I mentioned the discussions that we were having at the planning board level on these items. And she reminded me a few times that, you know, she stated to me that this was all approved by the New York DOT years ago. And I mentioned what the planning board's wishes were and concerns about that intersecting point with the bollards and/or maybe possibly a guide rail. What she had indicated to me is that they feel, they felt, and she felt, and she was going to try to get something in writing, which I have not received yet, that a bollard would not be warranted in this case because in their eyes, as far as traffic safety, they believe, and did, that is, that if someone were to hit that bollard and it was a breakaway bollard, that would cause injury to the pedestrian as well, in addition to the car that just hit the bollard. So they said that is not a good thing that they would agree to or entertain. Of course, that's just me speaking with her. And secondly, with the guide rail, they said the guide rail's application wouldn't warrant itself here. DOT and their traffic safety group, things have to have certain warrants before they feel they're legitimately required. So that's what she had informed me, and I told her and asked her if, for this meeting, excuse me, she would be able to get me some sort of written statement from traffic and safety. However, to date, I have not received it. So that's all I really have regarding the state and their, I would say, concerns with what we were thinking of doing. Now, as an idea, if the planning board still is inclined to want some sort of measure here that would possibly mitigate based on their concerns, we, I would recommend that you have in direct the applicant's engineer, who's Mazer, who are traffic engineers, of course, to submit a plan to the state as a resolution condition and put in there either bollards or the guide rail, whatever the planning board wishes to do. And hear back from the DOT, because, let's be honest, they are the approving authority in any and all work done within those right-of-way limits. And that would at least create a record of why it was needed and why it wasn't needed, or if, for some reason, they approve it. So I think in that particular case, that would be the recommended approach I would recommend to the planning board at this time, if that makes any sense.
Well, if I could chime in for a second here. The reason to find out where the DOT right-of-way line was as a result of these improvements was to find out whether this particular location that we're talking about was within their jurisdiction or not. We've established that it is. So going to the DOT is right what we need to do. I don't know where the notion of a breakaway bollard came from. Maybe there was a discussion.
I mentioned it.
It was to be a breakaway bollard. What, I'm not sure what purpose a breakaway bollard would, you know, to what purpose we do a breakaway bollard as opposed to one that didn't break away and protect somebody.
Well, because even though the car is damaged and there may be some material that moves forward to where people are, once you, once the car hits the breakaway bollard, it's lost its momentum. And so therefore, the, I think the injuries to anybody, including the driver, would be far less. But I can't see going on, you know, with this. It, I'm glad that Bob was able to reach the DOT people. I continue to disagree, but it's just a waste of time to go forward, I think, any farther. So I personally, I will take it off the table and just make a note for the record that the DOT has said verbally that they don't think there's any danger there.
You know, it might, now that it's been raised, right? It might be prudent, Bob, to see if we can get that letter that they said would be forthcoming.
Yeah, just for the record.
Yes, thank you, guys. And I did reiterate that to Ann Dorelli, and she did promise me she would get that from people that she works for on traffic and safety. So if I do get it, we'll have it for the record, and I can give it to Felicia, and we will have it documented.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I think at this point, you know, the applicant has conformed with what the DOT has set forth as what they wanted. They have, obviously, we've now determined that it's their property. So it seems to me that if we have any interest in pursuing this, this is not really, at this point, an applicant problem. Perhaps we talk to, you know, the town board if we wish to proceed any further. And if they wish to contact the DOT, write a letter, maybe in concert with our police force and put together something, a submission to the DOT to appeal this and see if it makes any sense. I think Tom raises, you know, like anything else, once you start to see it in the field, it's one thing to look at plans, but once you see it in the field, you have a different feel, different touch on it. So I don't think this is something that we should burden the applicant with at this point. If we think that this is something that we should raise with the town board and they in turn should raise with the DOT, I'm all in in terms of making that effort and, you know, leading that communication with the town board and police chief and whoever else should be involved.
Hey, Bob, before we move on, I'm sorry, my internet cut out, and so I got lost. I was lost. I got dropped for a bit of this discussion. And I kind of came back, and so I see the image on the screen, and I see that it sounds like we're saying that this is definitively, or closer definitively, DOT property. But that's, but that's not what I'm seeing on the screen, right?
That's a good point.
So I'm a little confused.
Well, let me draw again. I'll draw it again.
I'm sorry, Bob. I missed.
That's okay. Let me get a thicker line in red. This here, well, that is the new right-of-way taking map, which goes like this. Now, the old property line, they call it the highway boundary, used to be from here. But they took a taking map, which is right here. And as you can see from the sketch, that Matt was kind enough to draw up, then you right-of-way starts here and comes in.
But with that, it looks like the bollard is not within.
Right.
Their property that they attached, right?
It specifically says potential location for a bollard within town right-of-way.
Yeah.
Right in the middle of this drawing.
That was our note. This is, as Bob noted, was the former presumed line. Mazer says that there are oftentimes no records as to an exact line between a town and the state right-of-way. He said that you could try to find out that that was the case. You know, it appears to be the case because this is the former corner of the property and this former corner of property across the street. Now, the DOT did exercise jurisdiction over this entire intersection design. Now, the DOT did exercise jurisdiction over this entire intersection design. So we know they took this from Chapua Crossing, this L-shaped here. We dropped this note and this potential valid location. As a potential, if they did not also take part of the town right of way. In their approval of this intersection, then potentially this could have remained in the town right of way. And that, if we were to send a note, or the town were to send a note to the DOT, they could ask them that specific question. Is this within their jurisdiction, or could the town put a bollard there?
Well, can I say one thing here? I mean, just to throw a wrench into this whole mess here. You, I'm just speculating here. I mean, you can, you can, one can say that the right away could now go from here. Up to there and over. Possibly. I don't know who would make that determination. The state? I don't know. As opposed to going this way.
Well, what's the basis for that? Why would they, why would that happen? Just because they're arbitrary and capricious?
Well, you know, they might say, I don't know. I'm just thinking all ahead of it. They might say that that no longer exists. So it goes like this. It's just food for thought. But I don't know who would make that determination.
The best way to make the determination is the next time the state comes and repaves the road, where do they stop?
Yeah. I mean, if they have good drawings when they come.
So usually it's done because that's where they always stop, right? Then that's okay. So I still think that Bob's solution is the right one, which is. Even more so now if we don't know whether it's in the town right away or not. This is something that we really, if we're concerned about it, we should. You know, we should explore outside the four corners of this application, or 25 corners of this application, Felix, and. And, you know, go to the town and appeal their attention to this and sort of let them decide whether they are concerned or not and chase it down or not.
We agree.
Robert, would you want me to work with Jill, or you'll send something to the town board regarding this matter?
Yeah, that would be fine, Bob. That would be good. Thank you.
I'll work with Jill on this?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Pamela, do we have any, anyone out in the public who has any questions or wishes to make any comment on this application?
There are several attendees, but no one has raised their hand as of yet.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the applicant or board members in connection with this application?
Only, Bob, it's Felix again. I believe now that if the town is taking on the. Point on talking to the DOT, I think we've closed the loop on the open questions. I'm wondering if we are in a position where we could close the public hearing this evening?
Probably not. Clinton, my recommendation would be to keep it open until we have the resolution. The problem is when we close public hearings, we start to get on a very definitive clock. And we hate definitive clocks, of course.
I actually never thought Chappaqua had a clock. I thought she only had a calendar. But clearly, if you, if you needed a few extra minutes on your clock, and once we close the public hearing, I think you'd find us willing to grant it where. As you can imagine, we're trying to, you know, check the boxes as often as we can.
Right. Unfortunately, we work on a sundial and it's dark outside right now.
I don't think it's one of your conditions, but if we need to install a clock, we will. And I think that may be one that you missed, but, you know, anyway, you might, all sarcasm aside. We would appreciate if, I think if the issues, the open issues have been resolved. We would appreciate if we could close, and if something comes up from staff, you know, we will address it as we always do.
Right. Bob, you know, by the way, we've glossed over, Bob has submitted a fairly detailed report. Overall, his recommendations are that most of these things, I believe, can be conditioned in the resolution. But just before we leave it. I don't know. Are there any issues with regard to anything that's in Bob's memo from the applicant? I mean, some of these are legal documents that will have to be done later on. That's always when they're done. But some of these are physical, and I'm just wondering if you have, you know, any issue on any particular comment that Bob has made or recommendation that Bob has made.
We do not, Mr. Chairman. We've been working closely with Bob throughout this process and will continue to do so.
And what we always do in our resolutions is we always have standard language in there so that if there is some sort of special material change. That comes down from DEP or East Hudson, we always have language in there. If it is material to what we have approved, then we, of course, have to take another look at it. So I mean, it's a little bit of a risk, but I don't think. For example, Bob, on your ST8, are you fairly confident that this, all these things could be done with regard to? That was on, let's see, what was it? Yeah, the drainage structures. I mean, you're confident all this can be done. I mean, we've looked at these plans. So it's just a matter of getting, okay.
Yes, like I said, I did a little tally here real quick, not to bore you with my eight-page memo. I can't talk about it. I've been looking at it enough. But all of these items are predominantly site plan related items, meaning it's like drafting and some minor engineering issues to be put on the plans. That's why everything's pretty much. Before the site development plan being signed. Just so everyone knows, mainly with the applicant, I didn't mention it, I got a call from Charlie Silver. He is with the wig down in, up in Albany. So I sent your plans to him. Of course, as you know, they have Donald Lake working for him as a staff. So any comments we get back from them will be incorporated into my comments as well. I just don't know the timeline, whether we're going to get all the comments back, but we can craft something when we're doing the resolution that any and all comments as. As committed on by the wig shall be incorporated as well. Just I wanted to let everyone know that. I set that down just this morning to Charlie Silver.
Yep. Good, thank you.
Sure.
And again, Andy, there are no issues with regard, I mean, Tom, Bob has made some recommendations with regard to the timing of some of these issues. And for example, you know, filling in grading on some of these issues and some of the sequencing, which I personally think makes good sense and. Just want to make sure everyone's okay with these recommendations, because otherwise we'll, of course, support the town engineer and move forward in that direction.
We are, Mr. Chairman. We've discussed a number of these with Bob and come to. Shared agreement as he reflects in his memo.
Okay, presuming that the historical society is really unwilling to take the house. Where are we on that project with the town inspector and building inspector?
Don't know if, well, first of all, Clinton, have you formally rejected that offer?
He has no standing.
I think I may have implied it months ago.
I'm a former officer. It's a former. I can't accept it now. I would have loved to, Felix.
I hear you.
That's like latching.
Yeah, I hear you. So Dave, this is like, this is one of Dave's items. He's on point with it. I'm not aware. That there's really any new information. I think that he and the building inspector have met a number of times. There's been. And those guys are in concert with each other. So I'm kind of giving you a kind of a broad answer because I actually don't know exactly where they are, except. Nothing controversial has crossed my desk. So I think it's, I think everything is on track, Baba. And if you need. Than that, I really need Dave to help unless Andy or Matt or somebody out there in Zoom land knows the facts.
No, to our understanding, you're correct, Felix.
That's a rare moment. Did you hear that, everyone?
We'll send your tape of the meeting. That part of it.
Promise?
Okay. Again, Pam, we don't see, Pamela, we don't see anyone who, from the public with a question. No, no one with a hand raised?
No, no one has their hand raised.
Yes, yes.
I had two questions, one question, one comment. Bob Cioli, in your memo, you say that the. Extension of the water main is currently under town board review or currently under town review?
Yes, that's still being discussed by Jill and the board. It's out of my hands right now. So I don't know where that's going to go, quite honestly. But I kept that in there as a placeholder.
And what is the applicant's position?
So we, you're talking about the Catalina Water Line?
Yeah, the loop.
Candidly, Clinton, we thought it was a bridge too far in terms of a new ask that showed up. And we, we've asked that the town possibly delay putting that condition upon us for. Future requests that we will probably be making of the town. COVID has changed some of the world up there. We're going to have to come back to the town for a few things in the shopping center and elsewhere, and we thought that there would be an opportunity for us to be. To have that conversation later on. Candidly, we felt that we've picked up a tremendous number of costs. And we accommodated a significant number of requests in and around the toll approval. And we would like that issue to be presented at a later date.
Okay.
Unless you want to take the damn guest house.
Clinton, did you have another, you had another question?
No, I know. It was just a comment. At one of the earlier meetings, I was asked about the two. Two agreements. One is an offer of secession. The other was, I've forgotten what the other was, but they are fine with me. And I followed them to Nick. Joining in for the town.
Okay. Great, thank you. Sabrina, tell us where we are, what your realistic plans might be for the resolution. I know that you're in the midst of it, and I know you're also all going on vacation and, you know, we have all kinds of COVID. Problems and limitations and staffing and how many people can come to your office over the course of a day, a week, a month, and all that kind of stuff?
I am, I'm seriously thinking the second meeting in January. You know, it's my hopes to get a draft to everybody. You know, upon the new year, when we return on January 4th. I think January 5th is too soon. So I would look to the second meeting in January.
Okay, so at that, that time, we probably should have, at least as we normally do. A resolution in pretty good shape and pretty close to approval. And normally, we have some wordsmithing, perhaps as a condition or two that an applicant might have some issue with. But when we say that we have the resolution, it's not just a preliminary form. It's really getting very close to the formal.
Yes, it's with all of the conditions, the whereas clauses in place, legal has reviewed it. You know, so it's ready for your adoption with whatever changes you may have.
Okay. So what we can do is we can adjourn the public hearing, carry it over to the second meeting, which is what, going to be?
Felicia, do you have that?
19th? 19th, I believe.
January 19th with an eye toward having a resolution in final position, ready for adoption. If Felix, you want to swing by on the 5th just to say hello, that's fine too, but I don't think we really have much to do on the 5th.
Well, so needless to say, we, you know, we had hoped that this was going to be the Christmas present, three years in the making. It's certainly on all of my children's lists. But fortunately, they've gotten to the age where they no longer believe in Santa, and they don't think you're Santa Claus, Bob. So, you know, we're, we know we're on the one-inch line. It's painful to try to get over the one-inch line. I see that we're all there. That my concern always is if we, we're now at the 15th of December, the next time we're going to meet with each other is the 19th of January. That's over a month away. And if it continues, it slips again, it's, it's, it's just very, very painful.
We have, we have time constraints once we close a meeting. So that's one of the problems.
But also, if I, if I may. You know, it is, if we were not under COVID constraints, we would have been able to have a draft for you today. Do you know what I'm saying? Or by January 5th. It's just the situation going down to 25% in my office, knowing that we need to spend time going through the boxes upon boxes. Of plans that have been submitted for the past couple of years, making sure that we get it right. And then being able to get it to counsel on time for staff to review it. Felix, you know, you know. That town hall staff go to the nth degree for you. So, so, you know, we will do our best to get a draft to this board for the second meeting in January.
I appreciate what we're all going through, and I think that candidly, we're, you know, we're all, we're all anxious to get past this and start the construction process. I think if we could just in good faith, the reason I was asking to close the hearing, Bob, is I just didn't really want to introduce anything new that would further delay us, that we'd have to come back. And provide information on. So that's why I'm asking to close the hearing. If you, if you, if you're comfortable with that, and there's something else that we need to do, obviously, as I said before, we would do it. I would certainly politely love to be in a position. And recognizing what Sabrina is dealing with. That we're in a position to vote on the 19th. If the resolution has gotten to the level that she's suggesting, and it's been checked off by legal and everybody's on board. It would be wonderful if we could get presented and voted. And, but obviously, everything I'm saying is not a surprise to you. I think anxious is the word now. And I'm no longer frustrated. I'm just anxious to get to the, get to the finish line.
Sure.
Can I ask, ask a question here? Because I, I mean, I can picture what this, what this resolution is going to look like. And I anticipate, and maybe I'm wrong in this regard, well, I know I anticipate a long list of historical, you know. Documents and transfer and, and that's one of the things you're going through right now is to be sure that, as I understand. That you're going through right now is to be sure that that's all done properly and that it's all in the record. There is another part of this, which really is the content, as far as I'm concerned, which are the conditions that attach to the application. And those are the ones that I think are going to require a careful look by all of the board members. Might actually require some revisions or amendments to be sure we get it right. And I know that Felix, you and your team are going to be looking at that also. Is there any way to advance that part of the application to get that in the works? And then follow up with all of the standard record keeping that needs to go along, just to keep the. Real content moving forward instead of waiting to the last minute where we have everything and then postpone for another two weeks or four weeks while we. Really tie up the content issues.
Then I would, I would suggest that the board review Bob Cioli's memo that he submitted on Sunday night.
Yes.
Well, just for the, excuse me, guys, just for the record, I mean, I have 51 comments. And, you know, there will have to be done before the site development plan is signed. So keep that in mind. That's quite a bit of work, quite a bit of work to be done, 51 comments. So just keep in the back of your mind, get that done.
So in all fairness to the board, you know, yes, the brunt of the work, you know, all the work has pretty much been done. It's just a matter of compiling it and making it, you know, creating the resolution, telling the story. The conditions that Bob spent all weekend kind of crafting up in his most recent memo and, you know, which follows suit. Of every memo he has produced beforehand, those become the conditions. And there are other conditions, you know, that relate to like the guest house. And whatnot, but, but those conditions you have seen before or have been dictated by the town board. As opposed to Bob's review, which is completely related to this site plan. So, so I would advise you to spend your time reading through that memo and understanding whether or not you agree, you know, and understand his, his requests.
Okay. And the other issue I.
Um, and the other issue, I following up on Tom's comment, um, is as much as we're looking toward the 19th, um, to Tom's point, this is going to be a lengthy document, it's going to be quite of a substance in it, so the sooner we can get it, the sooner this, uh, the applicant can get it, the, the better. I, I, it's, it's just not going to be one of those documents that we can have dropped off at three o'clock in the afternoon that, that evening, of course. So, um, whatever we can do to get those, that information to us would really be helpful to try to, try to meet that target for the 19th. I, I think the fifth is unrealistic. I agree, Sabrina. Everyone's just coming back from vacation. You know, we're talking, it's a month away, but there's vacation time, there's holiday time, so it's really not a real month in terms of real, uh, normal, uh, uh, time. It's, it's much more compressed than, than it seems by looking at the calendar.
Good point.
So anyway, so what we'll do is
Going to February.
What's that? That's not on your calendar, we, uh, you know.
No, and in all seriousness, you know, it just, it, it takes time and, you know, it is, it is an effort on behalf of all of us, myself, Bob, Felicia, Clinton will have a large role in this. And it's making sure that we have crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is.
Also too, if I may, um, how do you guys stand with DEP's review of this SWIP for phase three?
Uh, it's ongoing. We made the submission to DEP and are in contact with them, so we're proceeding with that.
Keep in mind too, you'll have comments from Charlie Silver of the watershed inspector general's office too as well. Right? And, you know, I believe they always come up with quite a few comments, so you might have 70 comments in total, 80 comments in total, add up.
Yep, yep. Okay, but what we'll do is we'll target then January 19th, uh, we'll continue the public hearing. Uh, hopefully that'll be the target date for a resolution that will be in condition for us to discuss and, uh, approve. And, uh, we'll take it from there. So in the meantime, uh, uh, to, uh, everyone on your team, happy holidays, have a wonderful time. And, um, we'll see you, uh, in a month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Happy holidays, thank you.
Yep.
Happy holiday.
Happy holiday.
Okay, uh, we move to our next item. This is a public hearing, this is on Ferens.
Okay, Clinton, yeah, take care.
I'm headed in.
Yeah, take care.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Clinton.
Yes, sir, same to you. Jennifer, take it away.
Please, take it away.
Good to see you.
All right, we go, our next item is a public hearing, Ferens, 10, Kevin Rich Road, this is a preliminary subdivision plan approval, application for a lot line change. So Brad, you submitted a letter to us. Yep, which, uh, I think responded to the various items that, uh, we discussed last time, so thank you very much. For taking that on and doing the research and helping us out on this.
Anytime, Mr. Chairman, it was, it was a fun assignment getting back to go, I mean, it's going back to 1923, so I, I have homework assignment.
You're almost dealing with antique documents, almost 100 years old.
It was amazing. So I know tonight's a public hearing, if you'd like, I could put the map up on the screen, just, uh, in case there's anyone out there watching, should I quickly?
Do you call for a motion to open the hearing?
No, I did not. I guess I should, right? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good, thanks.
Terrific. So you're looking at the proposed lot line change plat. Um, we represent, um, Maxine and Jonathan Ferentz. Here's the, here's the Ferentz property here. This is the current property line separating Ferentz Lot, De Bellis Property.
Right.
De Bellis Home. It's, De Bellis Property is a little oddly shaped, right? It, it extends from here, comes up around all the way out to this corner here and tucks back around. So again, the Ferentz property, De Bellis property, the lot line would be proposed to move over so that Ferentz would acquire additional one half acre from the, from the De Bellis site. And as a result of shifting this line over a half acre, um, the Ferentz parcel would become 1.6 acres, De Bellis property would shrink from 13.9 to 13.4. Both lots would remain, um, zoning compliant, so the lot line change is not creating any zoning non-conformities.
And you, uh, your research answered the question in terms of who the, uh, who was the owner of the property between these properties at Cabin Ridge Road? So it seems to be owned by the association.
Right, so exactly, Mr. Chairman, Cabin Ridge Road, the entire right of way, both the paved portion that you see here and the white, which is just the unimproved part of the right of way, is owned by Cabin Ridge Inc., um, based on a 1949 filed map. And then there's an association that's responsible to maintain the road, that all the homeowners in the area participate in.
Okay.
And as pointed out last time, also, I know Bob had requested that, um, the water lines be shown on the plat and those lines were flagged by the town. Survey went out, picked up those, picked up the flags and the, and the water line serving both homes are shown on the plat.
Thank you, uh, Brett.
Sure.
Does the water line cross any of the property that's being proposed to be transferred? So we have to have another easement? Or is it just go clearly into the, uh, the building?
Into, straight to the homes, yep.
Great, okay, terrific. Okay. Great. Thank you. Uh, any questions from board members?
Yeah, looks good to me.
Yep. Do we have any questions from members of the public? Pamela, do we have anyone watching?
Yes, we do, but, uh, they have not raised their hand.
Okay, we'll give it a couple of seconds in case, uh, hands are raised.
Just for what it's worth, just seeing the, the participant list, Mike De Bellis, who is the, obviously the owner from which Ferentz has acquired the property, I see him as the attendees. I don't, you know, he's, he's out there, um, watching tonight. I miss, Mr. and Mrs. Ferentz are on, are on the screen and my colleague, Matt Acocella.
Right. Okay, not seeing any, uh, comments. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. So motion's carried, 5-0, uh, none opposed. Uh, Jennifer, we spoke about waiving jurisdiction on this, uh, and going straight to a resolution at this point. Uh, what are, what are the next steps that we have to take?
Next steps, um, believe at the last meeting did authorize staff to prepare a resolution. Um, and, and, you know, staff and myself, we're going to do our, our best to have a resolution for you tonight. Obviously that didn't happen. So we will continue in that effort for, uh, for your next meeting. Does that make sense, Sabrina, as far as timing?
Yeah, I think so. I, I know Felicia was almost done with it. It was just a matter of compiling it and getting it, uh, to everyone to review, so we're, uh, we're almost there. Felicia, do you agree?
Yes, I could have it ready by the end of the week.
So, so I think your first meeting in January, we can address this one.
Okay. Sounds good, uh, especially now that Felix, uh, Felix is off the line.
This one is much smaller.
Okay.
There's only been one and a half submissions.
Right. I don't think, I don't think there's any
Three years of submission.
Not a decade and a half, right?
I don't think there's any conditions in this one.
No.
Okay. Terrific, so.
Wait a minute, no conditions? Don't you think we should try and at least put one in?
No.
Happy holidays or something like that?
It's one of the few times I have
Answer all conditions during this process.
One of the few times I have no, uh, comments on it. It was a beautiful subdivision map, by the way, Brett.
Terrific, great, thank you.
I drew myself, Bob.
All right.
All right, so what we'll do is we'll plan to see you on, uh, January 5th. Hopefully we'll have the resolution there and we'll be in position to adopt the resolution. You'll be on your way. The 40-year quest, uh, will long last be, uh, completed. Yes, exactly. Thank goodness, we had a very small portion of your 40 years. Sometimes we actually take a large portion, but that's very good to see that it's a very small portion in this case. So very much, uh, thank you very much for all your help, Brad and, uh, and Matthew. And, uh, we look forward to seeing you then, uh, after the new year and we'll take it from there. So
Thank you all.
Happy holidays and
Happy holidays.
We'll, we'll see you soon.
Happy holidays, be well, stay safe.
Thank you very much.
Bye.
And we go to our next item. Uh, this is an informal appearance. Uh, this is on the Solomon application to Heathco Drive. This is a sub, site development plan for an in-ground pool. I think, yes, number two Heathco Drive. Dick, I was going to ask you if you could remember what happened on this application, but looking at the minutes, you were both absent and present at the same time.
Well, has anything changed?
Well done.
I don't, I don't remember much. I know, you know, I know it was there, at, at least for some of it. I read some of the documents a long time ago. Yeah, we authorized a change, but now it looks like they want a bigger change. I don't know.
Okay, uh, who wants to lead the charge here?
Anybody from the
I guess we can do it, or, or I guess we can do it. So Sabrina, why don't you, uh, lead off and, uh, run through the comments, uh, that you've, uh, submitted?
Sure, so, um, just to give a summary, this, we're looking at a, um, an application for installation of an in-ground swimming pool. It's a 2.91 acre lot. From a secret perspective, a state environmental quality review act, it is a type, uh, two action, so there's really no further action under SECRA. There's some corrections that I had regarding the application materials, um, which I noted on page three. There, there, so the, in the application and on the survey, there seems to be some incorrect size information that needs to be adjusted. It doesn't comply, you know, the site plan that was submitted and the survey that was submitted are inconsistent with each other, so they need to be rectified. And there should be the same level of detail on the survey that is on the planning board sheet one. This planning board sheet one should also include the coverage calculation tables, uh, that are, um, referenced in the September 2009 planning board resolution. Uh, for example, on the site plan, there's an anti-tracking pad that is located where there currently is an asphalt pad. The question is, is that being removed or is that asphalt pad being used as the anti-tracking pad? So we need a little bit more information and we need the two plans to be consistent with each other. You know, so the survey is kind of what's there now and the site plan will show what's going to change on the survey. So that's important to demarcate. I think that the biggest issue other than correcting the plans and the application information is really the development coverage. This came back to you, to the planning board several times. You know, there was a, an approval, um, back in 2009 where, um, which was taking off of a previous approval, I think it was in 2006, where the building coverage came in a lot less than what was initially approved by the planning board. So this building coverage right now on the plan is completely compliant with previous planning board approvals. And it is compliant with the code requirements. When it came to development coverage, the initial development bridge that was approved by the planning board was 5,424 square feet. In 2009, the planning board approved a 49% increase to this building coverage. And that 49% um, was up to 8,059 square feet. So at this point, we're looking at an additional increase due to the request for a swimming pool and its associated, um, equipment and coping of 1,860 square feet for a total development coverage of 9,919 square feet on the site. This 9,919 square feet is zoning code compliant, but it is exceeds what the planning board previously approved as part of your site plan approvals. Um, so you'll need to determine whether or not you want any, want to see any increase beyond your 2,000, or from your 2009 approval of 8,059 square feet. There's also, um, notations in the application that there, the applicant is looking to amend the clearing and grading limit line. Uh, per the 2009 resolution, there were specific, uh, conditions related to demarcating and maintaining wetland planting, the fence on the property. So, so I'm not sure if the planning board, um, wants to change that clearing, grading and limit line in totality, or you're willing to accept a portion of the change. So that's something that you need further, uh, discussion regarding.
Have we confirmed, have we confirmed compliance with those requirements in the clearing, grading, use and the plantings, et cetera?
I would defer to Dennis regarding that.
Okay.
Um, but those, I think the clearing and grading limit line and the development coverage are the two main issues that the board needs to focus on.
Right. Thank you. So, uh, Dennis, why don't you, uh, help us out with that before we take, uh, Bob's, uh, comments?
Right, I know there's, I forgot which sheet it was, let me just. I mean, having also been to the site, uh, I thought that area, uh, that was dedicated to the plantings and was sort of the hands-off area. It's pretty well defined in the field. And you could even, I mean, you can kind of make it out on, uh, planning board sheet one, um, with respect to the aerial view. I mean, that's obviously a non-growing season shot. Uh, so you have like the faded grass type look, which is obviously your maintained turf cover. And then, um, as we're moving, um, let me get my compass directly. So I guess you, you, you're moving, you know, away from the house and further down, um, Heathco. You could see where, you know, there's like that brownish transition. I mean, that, that, that's the area with respect to the wetlands that was established then, that that was the buffer area of the plantings that, uh, needed to be protected and, and this particular project wasn't proposed within that area or really proximal to that area. Um, my member alludes to something else, that's, uh, potentially another buffer, but just focusing on that, that seems to be pretty well cordoned off there in the, uh, in the corner.
Right, and there's no proposal to impact, uh, that area with this application either?
Not, not directly, no disturbance or anything like that.
Okay. Do you want to run through your comments, Dennis?
Uh, sure. I think the, the first comment probably alludes to what Sabrina has mentioned and I, from reading Bob's memo, uh, I think there's some mention of just some inconsistencies, depending on which one we were looking at. What, what, what is the disturbance and, you know, the numbers sometimes didn't match up when looking at one form page versus another, so we just needed clarity on that. I couldn't really determine why there was reference to a 150-foot wetland buffer line using that terminology that's going to take me to the code, and this is definitely a 100-foot buffer zone, so, uh, that could just be something else that would need to be clarified. I just felt, uh, just another notation item was on the site plan, um, it seemed like same name for different roadways, so just, you're going to want to, uh,
Right.
clarify on that. I, I had re-visited the property. I know I had looked at this once before and I did make mention of, uh, that there is a, a living multi-stem Japanese maple that's, you know, looks like it may or may not. Be, be preserved one way or the other, if it's gonna be removed, just to note that. If it's gonna not be removed, then I think it might need some. Some uh, protection uh, in terms of just, you know, not being impacted by the uh, potential construction activities. And none of that is, is shown on either plan. That was the only tree in the area. Since I know they're looking to uh, increase development coverage, uh. You know, I know from prior applications with pools, sometimes, you know, there's a preference for screening, uh, so I didn't see anything proposed for that. Uh, I also thought maybe that in consideration, as we were just discussing, uh, of that aerial view. There is a fair amount of maintained turf cover and, you know, uh, depending on what um. Occurs in, in addressing my neck comment with respect to actually showing the full extent of the one hundred wetland buffer as it kinda. Meanders its way around, around the property, that there potentially could be opportunity uh, there as well to do uh, some plantings to uh. At least, you know, make an attempt to offset some of these increases in, in development coverage, so. I think that's pretty much uh, concluded my, my memo.
Very good. So when we look at uh, a multi-stem tree like the Japanese maple, do you customarily aggregate those uh, various uh, trunks? Um, and that's we consider to be one tree and therefore of a certain size?
I, I view it as that, um, because, you know, and, and sometimes in this case, it's the species. I mean, this is just how this particular tree grows, so.
Right.
Uh, well, there are other trees obviously prefer to be single-stem, but you know. Early in their life, a rabbit gets hungry and all of a sudden, you know, the apoclomer stem is gone and the tree starts going another direction. So I think the clear direction for me is, I'm just willing to aggregate those diameters because you do have all of that uh. Diameter size that, you know, accounts for the tree.
Okay, terrific. Great. Uh, Bob, you had some comments? Thank you, Dennis.
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you, Robert. Basically, I focused on the stormwater improvements. Evidently based on what the site plan shows by Alfonzetti, which was the predominantly stormwater plan. They're adding a net new increase of about two thousand square feet. So because of that, they should submit a complete pollution, stormwater pollution prevention control plan. That's number one in accordance with chapter one oh eight A. Number two, they're disturbing more than five thousand square feet, of course, and they'll have to get the uh, DEC sign up for the notice of intent. And that's number two. I gave the website they can get the forms from. Uh, number three, since this is in the east of Hudson watershed, they would have to obliged by the one-year twenty-four-hour rainfall event, which is two point eight inches. As upon one point five and make certain they show that in their pre-treatment basins for the stormwater report. And for the Sabrina's point, for some reason, uh, the areas that shown on the plan prepared by Scavelli does not correspond. With the plan as prepared by Alfonzetti. Uh, one plan shows nine twelve I got more or less. And the stormwater plan chose about two thousand square feet, so they should show the same. And to Sabrina's point, again, the plans don't match up with rating and what's shown is existing. I mean, I would recommend, you have a beautiful survey done by, I believe, uh, JBL. I would recommend both your consultants use that as a base map, so at least when they do their proposals. They'll have the same information on both maps and that might make it a little bit easier for them to come up with their areas. I would make that as a recommendation. That's a general thing that uh, most engineers and architects do. They get the AutoCAD drawings from the surveyor and they use it as a base map. I highly recommend that.
I would also add that the uh, the site plan um, mislabels one of the streets. It shows a, a section of uh, Heathco and Heathco.
Yes, yes, Dennis and Sabrina picked up on that. They uh, they mentioned that already. I didn't duplicate it. They already picked up on it, but they did mention that. And hopefully the applicant will change that accordingly. Um, also to the last but not least, uh, clearly demarcate all the proposed and previous areas. So uh, basically when I review the stormwater report, I can see exactly what the new net and previous is as well. Uh, and to Sabrina's point with the clearing and grading. I couldn't really make heads or tails of what you wanted to do with the clearing and grading. So be very clear on what was shown on the approved plan to Sabrina's point. And show exactly what you'd like to do with the new. Now, whether you're gonna have an amended clearing and grading, it looks to me that you may. But keep that in mind when you do that on your next submission, so Sabrina, Dennis and I will have, and the planning board will have a clear understanding of exactly. What you wanna do with the amended clearing and grading in mind, and that ends my comments for tonight on this application.
Very good.
Very minor question. There's a fountain in the front yard and is that considered an above-ground structure? Is that a structure or is that just something else? And is it counted in all of the development uh, or building things? Bob?
That's a good point. I saw that too and uh, you know, I don't know if the county will look lightly upon a fountain put on top of absorption fields.
Yeah.
That's something, that's a very good point. That's something that the applicant might wanna check with the county and get some sort of sign off on that. Because I know for a fact, when I did the inspection on this years ago, when I came in for a CO, uh, obviously there was no fountain there. If there was, I wouldn't have signed off on the CO, so I would definitely recommend, good pickup, uh, Dick, that the applicant uh, go to the county. Show that to the county and at the very least, get a no objection on the site plan, so the county is aware of it and maybe they might have an issue with it. Since again, they are the approving authority for that, so I would recommend that. Thank you, Dick.
You did, you made it a better question. Thank you.
Uh, I had a question about uh, the shed that's at the rear of the property. Is that of a certain size that requires it to comply with the setback? It seems to be almost on the property line there in the rear. But maybe it's so small that it doesn't count. I don't know. I think it's only ninety-eight square feet.
Well, that's a, that's a Tom DePaul question, uh, and I believe all sheds do require the meat setbacks, but I'd have to check with Tom and have to see if there's a. Like you said, a size criteria where it's below a certain threshold, it doesn't need it, but that's something uh, Tom should maybe answer to.
I have a very small shed and um, certainly it counted. When I, when I had it, uh. You know, it, it fell apart and I had to get another one, so it counted.
Yep. Okay, um, Mr. and Mrs. Solomon, I, I don't see your professionals with you tonight. Have they had a chance to see? Uh, the comments from the town planner, the environmental coordinator and the town engineer? They didn't have the benefit of our comments, but um, normally they're here and they would take these and if there are any issues or misunderstandings, they, they. Raise the issues then. But if you're confident that they'll get this information or God forbid, if they wanna watch us on television, uh, they could get the information that way, I guess. But um, uh, it's unusual not to have uh, one of your representatives here. So I just hope that um, the benefit of our comments and the comments from staff uh, get back to your, your professionals.
Thank you. I apologize for, you know, it's me and my wife only and uh. This was our first meeting to attend to the board and thanks for the board time and uh. And the effort to look through the application and I tried to take as much notes as I can. I spoke to the um, John Scavelli um, yesterday and um. And I thought that he was gonna be joining us in the meeting, but I don't know what happened. So, so I'll, I'll follow up with him tomorrow.
Okay. I mean, there's no, no, no special problem as long as they, you know, get the information. But um, uh, just wanted to raise that issue, make sure that they, they.
How do they get it? How do they get the, the tape of this so they know?
This will be posted, but if they have questions regarding any of the staff review memo, then um.
Do we, do we get, do we usually get minutes like of the meeting or?
Yeah.
Two weeks.
But the, the meeting will be posted before the minutes are available.
So on the town website.
On my newcastle dot, or uh, www.mynewcastle.com.
Just to make note, the review memos were sent to the professionals as well.
Terrific, thank you.
Got them. Thank you, Felicia.
Okay, so what we'll do is um, we'll wait for uh, information coming back from your professionals. Um, Sabrina, are you, would you recommend that we schedule a public hearing for the next meeting on this or just another informal?
I think, I think it depends on how comfortable the board feels with the development coverage and the clearing and grading limit line.
I'm, at the moment, I'm not comfortable, so.
Okay. So Dick, you would recommend another informal meeting?
I, I think, I mean, there's a, a lot of inconsistencies, uh, you know, another little one is that they have a, a wooden fence on the, on the back end of the property. And it crisscrosses a property line three times. It's not a big, it's not a big crossing, no more than five feet or so, but hey. Uh, something's wrong there.
And, and from my perspective, it sounds like there are two main reasons why they are before the planning board, which is the development coverage and the clearing and grading limit lines. And I'd just love to hear from the applicants and their professionals. Sort of uh, what is they wanna do and why they wanna do it, the justification and uh.
Yep.
I think that's, that's just still outstanding. Um, and also perhaps as a question to ourselves, I understand uh, from uh, your memo Sabrina and, and from your discussions tonight. That, that, that the development coverage is, is um, doesn't exceed the code, but it is. It does exceed what the, the approvals from two thousand nine uh, put in place and requiring to come back to us. And I'm just curious. Why that was done then?
Well, what I can, what I can ascertain from reading through the previous decisions was the wetlands. Um, you know, putting, uh, requiring a fence to be put up and then the maintenance and monitor, the planting plan, the maintenance and monitoring of that. Planting plan for a year, that is, you know, pretty significant in regards to protection of that wetland buffer.
That's uh, yeah, I was gonna ask the same question, uh, Eldad about that. But that, I think that's a separate question, isn't it? Uh, because I think the question Eldad is asking, and at least the one I would ask. Is uh, it sounds as though, I'm not sure whether the record states that we put a hard number as a limit.
It doesn't.
And did, did, is, is that number actually, is that just what it ended up being? Or did we have reasons to say, and did we say that the coverage shouldn't be any more than what we granted?
It, it, it doesn't, it says that any additional coverage has to go back to the planning board, so it didn't set a limit based on what you. What the previous board had set or approved, and it didn't provide any rationale in the resolution.
Okay, so it sounds like it's just a number that got backed into as a result of what the applicant wanted to do then.
Correct.
And um, and so the, the number that I guess really is in play is what the uh, zoning uh, maximum development coverage is.
Well.
As a, as a hard maximum, as a hard maximum, but we may want to or need to adjust that based on. Other conditions that uh, exist.
Right. And I think the cor-
For years, excuse me, for years, I mean, we've been trying to keep as much open space that isn't just grass. You know, on large uh, pieces of property and that's, that's where we were. And uh, we got more sophisticated after that by putting in uh, you know, percentage limits and things like that, which we didn't have in this one, I don't think.
Right. And I think a corollary to these, these points uh, would be also, are there opportunities to, to mitigate whatever expansion we're looking at here? To maintain uh, disturbance to the, to the original levels, the approved levels. And if there are good reasons for doing that. So I think those are the, the things for the professionals to come back to us with, that information.
And there's the question of the wetlands in general here and, and, and what was required at the time. It sounds like there was some kind of a. There were obligations uh, imposed on the applicant at the time. Is that, is that right, Sabrina?
Yeah, uh, yes, uh, there, you know, there were requirements and the long-term fence was to remain in perpetuity, I would presume. But the monitoring and, and maintenance, I guess, was a year in your resolution as, as a condition. You know, so the question is what's left out there today and how, you know. Is the fence still there? I mean, on the planet, still there? Is the fence still there? And is there a reason to change the clearing and grading limit line based on the swimming pool and what the applicant is proposing?
Yep. Okay.
You know, so, so I think, I think that the applicant should be um, advised to, you know, come back next time with the revisions you need to make. But also to explain to the board what it is you want to do and the reason behind that.
Right, in terms of the disturbance, we know you wanna build a pool.
Right, right.
A large pool.
You know, I understand it's a large pool, but when I bought the house back in two thousand twelve, I was told that there was a permit that was issued by your respected board. In, in terms of that's why I moved forward. And then when the builder went to the town, I was told different story that I have to apply everything from scratch and. It was an absolute nightmare for the past two years, just to say the least, you know. And here we go, I'm in the meeting at eight thirty, we did, we did the respected members and they don't show up to the meeting and I, I don't know what you guys are talking about.
Yeah, no, we understand.
Well, the, the comment about it being a large pool, I don't think there's anything pejorative about that. I mean, the pool can be. Within the context of the restrictions that, that, you know, wetlands and coverage and so on and so forth that are all known. No, there's no such thing as a pool that is too big or too small. So I wouldn't hold any, any uh, anything against the idea of there being a large pool as long as it, as it fits within the constraints that we're responsible. To monitor and administer.
Read.
Yep, fair enough, good. Okay, what we'll do is we'll wait to hear from you and your, and your professionals. And get you scheduled then for uh, the next time that they're available and have a submission into staff. And uh, perhaps it might be the nineteenth of uh, of January, if they get the materials over the holidays and, and, and it's a staff uh, in time for review. Does that make sense, Sabrina and Felicia? Is that a reasonable timeframe?
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's, the timeframe is really in the hands of the applicants.
Right, right, of course.
And, and their consultant team and, you know, my office and all staff are willing to speak with your professionals if they don't understand something or they need more information or. You know, so.
Thank you.
Okay, very good.
Have a good evening.
Yeah, have a good evening. Have a wonderful holiday.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that uh, concludes the festivities for this evening. We have not scheduled, did we schedule another special meeting on the uh, DGIS or did we punt that until after the holiday or what?
You scheduled, go ahead, Felicia. You scheduled one for January seventh.
Okay. Is that on the form-based code or the DGIS?
It can be both.
Great.
I thought that it was on the form-based code.
It was, but I'm seeming to think that you guys haven't gotten your memo together all the way yet.
No, I don't understand that. Um, it, when do we, I thought we'd made commitments to each other that we were going to uh, be getting this, this thing out. And uh, we haven't, so are we, we, we need to sort of reestablish what the commitment is. The town board is working. I think we owe them a memo.
Yeah, and I think the DGIS is what we decided was also something that was more important and uh, important to get to them before the end of the year. So here we are, we're getting uh, December fifteenth. So I took a stab at uh, you know, the, the, the opening part of the memo and then basically took Tom's work that where he consolidated. Many of the issues that we discussed. Did a little bit of editing, frankly dropped a few things. Uh, I think there were some of my questions, so I, I didn't think there were any, they were not pertinent anymore. There's certainly some wordsmithing if, if someone wants to take a look at it. I tried to reorganize in some way to have some of the issues uh, placed in, in other sections. And just this evening, I see that we do have now uh, Canaan and, and Eldad have put together some information for us on the affordable housing. So that's something that we'll be inserting in. So um, what, what I can do is have that merged in, in the document. Forgive me when things don't line up correctly with the dots and all that sort of thing. That's way above my pay grade, so I'll leave that to the final touch people. But um, uh, let's, I'll try to get that out by the end of the week and then please, uh, let's wordsmith it and um. Send comments in, let's see if we can't get something done by uh, next week before the holiday and uh, get it out to uh, the town board.
Please remember, please remember that um, it does need to be submitted to council prior to you sending it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think I had Nick on the copy, Nick and Jennifer, right?
Yeah, but if you're gonna edit it. Yeah, but if you're going to edit it and rewrite it again.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, of course.
I think there'd just be small changes, I, I have a few suggestions, most of the things that I had said verbally were captured.
Yep.
One thing that, one thing though, that just to think about, I'm, I'm perplexed as to why we would have so many studio apartments in this complex. I mean, what is, what does that do, I mean, it, who, who's, that gets to one of the questions as to, well, what is, what are the people going to do that live here, what are they going to do during the day, where are they going to have jobs? You know, maybe there are more families that are having no children, but a, but a one-bedroom apartment is really small. And of course, the, as Sabrina has told me, the, you know, the, the whole facility would be close to railroad tracks, so, you know, that really gets rid of inconveniences if they have jobs elsewhere. But I think jobs were going to be really stuck in the house for quite some time, and there are a lot of, you know, companies that are trying to form together how they can, they can get all the company's information into a meeting and things like that, and I suspect, you know, that some of those, those one-family and, you know, two-person family houses, you know, they're going to be there and then they're going to leave, and what is the allure is the other thing, just for everybody to think about. It's in the document that's here now. You know, this, but there's nothing, it's all housing, and a minor amount of, of commercial, and, and again, there's, there's not enough emphasis on what is the lure, what is the reason that they would come to downtown Chappaqua? Not just because they live in the hamlet or the township, but they live nearby.
Sabrina, are we, are we, are we wandering into a subject that hasn't been properly publicly noticed?
Yes.
Well, I'll be quiet.
Oh, I, I think they're good comments, but
Yeah.
We're going to.
Which is why I think that, that if you want.
Find, we ought to either, I guess, do it again and take up the subject again in, in early or mid-January. We're into form-based code anyway. And this is probably a form-based code subject, more so than it might be EIS subject, but I don't think we can discuss it now unless I'm mistaken.
And I think there's a reason for it overlapping is because the issue is overlapping, and
It's a project, it, it's not a code comment, it's a DG EIS comment.
But, but again, to Tom's point and Sabrina's point, we really can't get into that because we didn't notice that for the meeting. Now, what we can do for this meeting, so what we can do, I, I, I agree with Tom, I'm, I'm a little bit upset that we haven't moved further here, and not upset, it's just the way it goes. But, you know, if, if there is, I know Bob and Sabrina will be on vacation, but if there is some willingness to really set up something next week, perhaps, just a, basically a wordsmithing and then making sure we're getting all the important points in here on the DGIS. It had been our goal to get that document out to the town board because Sabrina has represented to us that this is what they're really focused on right now, and
If I may, if, if I may, the public hearing is still open, there's a joint meeting between the town board and the school board, January thirteenth. The next, the public hearing has been continued to the nineteenth. You have time after the new year, if you wanted to notice a, a dual topic of the DG EIS and the form-based code on the seventh of January, you can wordsmith it and come to that meeting with a draft memo that legal has had a chance to review and be ready to approve that as your memo.
Yes, we can do that. Thank you for putting out the, letting us know what the schedule is. And, but what we can do, what we should do are maybe two different things. I, 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 I'm having a little bit of difficulty with the, the, the progress of this because we've been talking about doing this, getting this memo out for weeks. And again, the town board is working, taking comments, talking, having working sessions on this subject. And I just can't find any excuse why we haven't been able to, to help them in this regard. I'm not suggesting that they're waiting on pins and needles for, you know, our input. But I, I know that, that as a, as a planning board in this matter, we have a significant voice. And I think that we owe them that voice sooner rather than later, and I can't find any excuse internally why we haven't done it yet. If there's a way that we can, if it needs another meeting, I think that would be something we should do right away. I don't know why it would need another meeting, I think the language doesn't have to be perfect, I think that just the information that we want to communicate needs to be in there. I do think some wordsmithing in the beginning to set the tone right is important, and Bob, you've done some really good work there. But otherwise, I think it's just, let's just, you know, be sure everything's in there and, and not let, again, you know, not let the the perfect be the enemy of the good, let's just, let's just get it out, and
Yeah, I, I agree, Tom, I mean, it's, it's, like you said in the last meeting, and I didn't say it right, I guess, or even close, it's, it's ninety percent, ninety-five percent done now, I mean, it's
Yep, I agree.
If we now have the affordable housing piece, we all need to take a, a look at that, which is, is great to have. And add any comments we have to that, to that. And just, you know, do the, do the final, you know, the final memo, and I'm happy to, to take it up again and to do what I can. I know, you know, Bob, you're running a business and, and I'm not, so I'm happy to spend some time to help out if I can in the interest of just wrapping this thing up and getting it out. So just to, to finish on that point, this is, well, Tuesday. I can have something in everybody's inbox on Thursday. And unless, I just recommend, unless there's something which is just hair-on-fire a problem with what you see, let's just try and get it out if we can by the end of the week over Bob's signature to, to council, so they can look at it, so that the town board can have it for the holiday.
Yeah.
That sounds good to me.
Yep, I agree. I think, I think that makes good sense. And I think you raised a very good point, it doesn't have to be perfect language. It's, you know, we could just make sure we have the, the, the content in there and the issues that we want to raise are being raised. It'll be subject to the interpretation of the consultants and the town board, and they can go from there. So I think it makes good sense. So Tom, I, I'll take you up on that, that sounds great, if you can take a look at the affordable housing that we just received, blend that in, and that'll be great if we can see something on Thursday. And then hopefully have everyone's comments, thoughts, and get this out to ruin Jennifer and Nick's weekend.
It would be, it would be, I'm sorry, it would be better if everybody looked at the affordable housing piece before Thursday so that I could get everybody comment, everybody's comments in the Thursday, the Thursday draft, instead of waiting for a Thursday draft and then look at it.
The affordable housing piece is a separate document, or it's number seventeen?
No, I, we just sent it as a separate document, but I had a, I had a quick suggestion, again, I don't know how this is done, but if we actually have a shared document that we are all working off of, then we, we can take off the sequential part of commenting. I'm happy to set it up, but I don't know if that's done, Sabrina or Jennifer. I, I mean, I would do it on a Google Doc, share it with everyone, so everyone can take a stab at it simultaneously, and then we can knock it out a little faster than it being sequential comment.
I'd like to see it, the expanded one, I, I guess, maybe, you know, it can, it can be, we could have Felicia send it out. And maybe I have it, I just didn't see it.
There has.
Lots of problems today with that.
Canaan, in response to your, to your question about a shared document, a Google document, this board has not done that before. So we, we, we email Word documents, some track change, some make changes by hand, and then we usually compile a completed track change document for everybody. So it's not as, it's not as clean as working in Google Docs.
I'm, I'm happy to go whichever way you guys suggest, we just sent a Word document, Eldad and I, and I can bring it into yours, Bob.
I can't hear you.
Yep.
I can bring the doc, we can merge the two documents, so Bob, I can just bring what we have, we have sent out as a separate document, we can bring it into yours, and then, then we can.
Yeah, that's fine, and then we can get that over to Tom.
I'm sorry, hang on a second. I, that would be fine, but why not, if you have transmitted the document, the, the the affordable housing piece to all of us, then that means I have it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know why, I can take it and insert it into the other document, let's just, let's not go back and forth with all this.
Okay.
I'll do it, and you guys look at it on Thursday. Everybody should, I think, look at the affordable housing piece before the end of the day Thursday and get any comments to that, and so I'll get it in the Thursday document. And then we can all look at it one last time.
Sounds good, perfect.
Okay. And, and, you know, the, the Google, the, the Google Doc, Doc thing, I'm not familiar with it, but that may have been a great way to start this. But we're sort of at the end of it, maybe next time, you know, the next one we do, we could do that way.
I'm, I'm happy to just copy it over, create a Google Doc, that's how Eldad and I work, so I'm happy to put it together and send it to you, then everyone can access it, and then we, we can run with it together.
I don't know what, I don't know what that means, run with it together, I'm going to put some.
I, you know, I, I think, I think, listen, I, I think that working in Google Docs would be a wonderful thing for the group to do. Let's reserve that for the next memo, because there's some time issues and technology issues that will need to work out. So let's say the drafting of the form-based code memo should be done in a Google Doc, and we can all experiment in sharing it.
I don't, I think that we're beyond the point of having simultaneous changes with everybody working on the same document at the same time. It, it seems to me that we are at this close to a final, and let's just go with it.
Yep, yep. Canaan, we're, I'm sorry to burst the bubble about the folks you're working with.
I got to tell you.
I know it's only the second or third meeting, but you know, we're just not that quick.
Kirkwood, anyway, is old.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely. I've been dragging back this convoy for years.
No, it, it's totally fine, it works, it works.
Okay, let's try it next time.
Yep, great, okay, so let's do it that way, I think that makes great sense, I think it is far more important to get this out. I think frankly, to Tom's point, not getting it out is, is, is worse because I think people, they've seen that we've been talking about this. It just doesn't make sense not to get the information out to the town board for their benefit. Okay, good, so we'll, we'll work on that, is there anything else? If not, is there a motion to close the meeting?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.